Children aren't put first. The system is put first. And it's a system that feeds off of failure. So we don't have mechanisms in there. You know, when you look at the regulations and the grant blocks, all that money that comes down. Failure is rewarded over the success. So the more children that you have that are failing, the more money systems receive. And depending on demographics as well, filling those holes, they get more funding for that.
Hey, Joyful Warriors. Tiffany Justice here. I'm the host of the Joyful Warrior Podcast on behalf of Moms for Liberty. And we are so excited to invite on a fellow joyful warrior to chat with you today. Ladies and gentlemen, meet Deborah Tisler. Deborah is a mom, a Fairfax County resident, a former teacher there and is now running for school board. And as many of you know, I was on school board and it is not easy. It is a labor of love, but it certainly can be a wonderful experience. And we are so incredibly thankful when we see so many moms and dads across the country stepping up to run for school board. Deb, welcome to the Joyful Warrior Podcast. Let's talk a little bit about your journey to this point, now running for elected office. Did you ever think that you would run for school board?
I did not, not until Fairfax County Public Schools put that last straw on my back when they sued me over my FOIA request in 2021.
So what was that FOIA request? Tell us a little bit about that.
So as a longtime advocate and teacher in my community, I had noticed that there was an uptick in the use of outside legal counsel to fight parents of students with disabilities. And I had noticed that the scales of justice were not in the favor of the parents in our community of students with disabilities. Our school system was, I believe, abusing their use of our taxpayer funds to load up on teams of attorneys. And I have no issue with people seeking legal consult and getting legal help or institutions doing so. But it was to the point that I believe was excessive. And later turned out that yes, they were using funds in an excessive manner to utilize lawyers for these proceedings that could have been handled in a much better, meaningful way.
So I have said before, school systems, in my opinion, do two things very well. Celebrate themselves and protect themselves. And oftentimes, they celebrate themselves to protect themselves. And when I say that, I think of graduation inflation, rising graduation rates all across the country. But when we look at literacy proficiency and math proficiency, those two areas continue to decline. So I have no doubt that the districts protect themselves very well with lots of taxpayer money, while parents are often left without an ability to advocate in an effective manner for their children. So good for you for taking the step to fight back on behalf of so many parents. Deb, the schools closed, right? March 2020. And parents got a window into their children's education like they had never had before. Tell us what that was like for you as a mom of four, but also someone, also a teacher and a literacy expert.
So when the cameras turned on when they would work, let me just start there because our district struggled with even providing an online platform that would work. The teachers were struggling in how to utilize that platform and instruct in that type of a setting. And the kids were disengaging. I could see it in my own, you know, my children's classrooms that were online. The kids were not there. And very often, the classes were ending early. There was very little instruction. Most was left as independent work for the children to do. And all I could think of was the poor kids that were at home. They didn't have that support. They couldn't receive that type of instruction that they needed to access the curriculum. And just as you were saying before, I could think of, because my one daughter was a senior at the time, heading into her senior year. What about graduation? The skills that they're going to need for post-secondary achievement? Because we know 63% of children that drop out and do not receive a high school diploma end up interfacing with the justice system in a negative way in their future.
I think parents got a big wake up call. And they saw, right? Their kids weren't reading as well as they thought they could or should. And 2020 NAEP scores showed us that in fact, reading proficiency, which wasn't good before the pandemic, has only continued to decline. I look at proficiency rates across the country, and they're abysmal. So let's talk a little bit about the NAEP. Maybe you could talk a little bit about that national test that's given and what those proficient, what that proficiency data tells you.
It's pretty basic. I mean, the numbers are black and white right there. Our kids' skills are not where they need to be in order to be proficient in their future learning. And starting in fourth grade, you start to read to learn. And if you can't access that, you're not going to be as successful as your peers that can. And all children would benefit and do from direct, explicit, systematic instruction. And what does that mean? That's teaching your vowels and consonants. Like back in the day when you would turn on Sesame Street and you would hear A is for apple, ah. Basics are missing. And even children that are natural bloomers in literacy, there are people, that's their strength. And they can pick up to a certain degree naturally reading. But even with direct, explicit instruction, they would bloom even further in their understanding of the structure of the language, meaning building their vocabulary. When you look at the decline in the SAT scores, specifically in my area, there are areas in there on the SAT scores that point to that lack of development in vocabulary and in grammar and in the structure of language.
So NAEP, National Assessment for Educational Progress, in 2022 showed that only 37% of children were reading at or above grade level. So 2/3 of kids are not reading at grade level. What does that mean? Can you explain to us? Because there are a lot of people that try to play games with proficiency scores and hide failure. And my biggest concern has been that I think there are a lot of excuses for educational failure that are happening in this country offered by the teachers' unions, also known as the K-12 cartel, and our public education system, which are very intent again on protecting and celebrating themselves. So what is, what do those proficiency rates mean for kids?
It means that they're not getting the, they're not receiving the instruction that they require in order to move forward in their development of language, of those skills that they so desperately need. I mean, that's an overall number. But when you break it down to students with disabilities whom the majority have average to above average to gifted ability, you're looking at 8% to 9% that are proficient or above on the NAEP scores in reading.
Wow, 8% to 9%.
Yes.
Absolutely amazing. I mean, the idea that anyone would fight against the statement that our education system is failing in this country is just ridiculous to me. How did we get here? How do we get to a place where we are not? We spent $751 billion last year on public education. And yet, our children are not learning to read in school. Where has the breakdown happened?
There's a drastic shift from the child not being first and the system being first. And we need to go back and look at, you know, in order to move forward, we need to look at what we've done. We need to own up to the errors that we've made. And we need to look at specifically the instruction that the children are receiving in the classroom. Like you were just saying, that money factor is huge. These school systems received all of this funding, right? And to me, it's a smash and grab. They took it. They're without the accountability that is needed. And the questions, the hard questions asked, what did you do with the money? The kids can't read. And we need to move forward with quick corrective actions.
So what does that look like? Because I know there's something called the Reading Wars going on. I'm following this. I listened to a woman, Emily Hanford. She put out a podcast called Sold a Story. People who are listening to this podcast right now, go and listen to it, please. Reading, teaching kids to read shouldn't be a political issue or a partisan issue. We should all want our children to learn to read. But as we've discussed so far, children are not learning how to read in school. So you started to talk a little bit about instruction before. Let's talk about how should teachers be prepared to teach children how to read? And what is the best method of learning for children in the classroom?
We need to start with ensuring that our teachers understand the structure of our English language. Our language is built upon building blocks. And then everything will come together. Like I would tell my students, think of it like a Legos set. You're putting things together or a puzzle. That is our language. There's levels to it and pieces that go together. Our teachers need to have a good understanding of that structure. They need to be able to take that and at the different grade levels, implement, that means put together the lesson plans and be able to write lesson plans on what structure or focus is needed that day for the classroom as a whole and then for each individualized student as well. How am I going to ensure that this student is moving proficiently along with their peers? And then what do I do to then work with that individual student to further their progress? Our teachers are missing that piece of instruction as they're going through the process. Just talking to colleagues and peers that graduated after me from school, where you learn to become a teacher at the higher education level or even at the master's degree level, they were missing that component on how to teach reading, on how to teach literacy, how to teach writing. And what's interesting here in Fairfax, Virginia, when I pulled the training, when I asked for a FOIA request and I reviewed the trainings of the teachers here, the focus is not on the essential skills that kids need. They have redirected to an agenda that is not truly child focused on what those foundational skills are needed. Because if a child cannot read, if a child cannot numerate and keep up with their peers in class, you're going to see behaviors. I mean, it's expected as adults, right, Tiffany? If you go to a conference or any type of a presentation and you can't access what the people around you are doing, are you going to be as focused on your instruction or what is going on from the instructor? Are you going to be able to engage? How are you going to feel if the others are engaging in conversations and you can't engage at the same level?
You're gonna feel stupid, right? I mean, that's really the bottom line. You're gonna feel stupid, like you're not good enough. You know, I have a son who's 15, who's been struggling in math. And I said, why aren't you asking questions in class? And he said, because I don't even know where to start, Mom. I don't even know what to ask. And that progressed to a different situation with a teacher who perhaps wasn't really as accessible for questions as they should be as well. But the truth was that when children feel stupid, they stop asking questions. They get quiet or they act out in different ways. You're absolutely right.
And after the pandemic and children went back to school, what have we seen? And that's another component, a rise in negative behaviors.
So that was one of the things, talking about reading. Kids missed, there were children who missed kindergarten, who missed first grade, who missed second grade. And I was left thinking to myself, how do you miss an entire grade and just get moved to the next one? Especially in elementary school, especially in K through three. I think there are a lot of parents that are wondering, how do I know if my child is really getting what they need in school? And they want to understand. They know what their rights are to direct the education of their child. But with those rights come responsibilities as well. And asking questions and being involved in your children's education is definitely a responsibility. So give us an idea of how parents can engage to understand if their children are really learning in school.
I say, open up that communication with the teacher. Ask questions to the teacher specifically. How is my child doing in all five areas of reading? Can my child read at grade level? Is my child a slow reader? I noticed at home that Suzie is struggling on specific types of words. Keep your little bits of notes. I know we're all busy. But as you're with your children, just keep some simple notes as to, I noticed my child read this type of word incorrectly and was struggling. So that when you go to the parent teacher conferences or you ask for a conference, you can ask the teacher, what does this look like in the classroom? And then how are you helping them? I would like to help my child too.
Yeah, it's partnership, right? We will not, we do not co-parent with the government, but we want to partner with our children's schools. So asking what your child is expected to learn this year. What are some of the answers? What should parents expect if they say, you know, what should I expect my child to learn this year? Let's take a, you know, a first grader, for example.
Well, every state, every publicly funded school system in every state should have standards. And those standards should be made available to the parents. Here in Virginia, they call them the standards of learning. And that is the roadmap of the skills, the basic standards for the grade level that the child should be able to reach master by the end of the school year. Your child should be able in the first grade to start reading simple sentences at the bare minimum in first grade. Like, the cat is fat. Being able to rhyme, being able to write specific, what they're called, everyday words that you'll see sight words like the, at, it, of, for, the. I mean, basic words. They should be able to spell without hesitation. And those are called sight words. They should also be able to sound out words like cat. They should be able to go and look at that word and say, okay, that's a hard C that I see in front of me. And they should be able to show you c, a, t, cat. They should be able to read it and they should be able to write it. If you're seeing a disparity between what your child is reading and writing as well, that's also an indicator that they need a direct, explicit, systematic approach to literacy.
So I hear that a lot. Direct, let's say this again, direct instruction I hear a lot. Explain what that means. Because I think oftentimes, what I've found when we talk about education and certainly in IEP meetings for children with disabilities. I have two children who have IEPs. And there's a lot of, there are a lot of acronyms, first of all. But then there's also, sometimes I think the school system, you know, has a language that they work within that isn't the language of parents, right? We didn't go to school to learn to be a teacher. So we're not, we don't understand some of the terminology. So if you could just break that down for us a little bit. When you hear direct, explicit instruction as a parent when it comes to reading, what does that mean?
That means that your child is receiving instruction on the structure of the English language. So we're going to start off with, like I said, building blocks. If we have words such as, the example I gave was cat before. Another one could be rub, r, u, b, rub. So your child should be able to segment each sound in that word, which is attached to the letters. And there's combinations. And then they should be able to blend it all back together. They should also be able to, you know, after practice, the teachers should monitor whether or not Johnny or Suzie or whomever can read what's called a consonant vowel consonant word. Because that's one of our basic structures in our English language. You need to have the knowledge of each structure in order to build to the bigger words. That's just how it works. And without that direct instruction on learning the sound to the letters, right? And knowing how to blend and segment, which starts at the early grades. That's why K to three is so important. It's going to be a struggle later to get those skills for the bigger words.
So Deb, they are learning to read. Children are learning to read in K through three. And then in fourth grade, as you said, they now need to know how to read in order to be able to learn. That expectation is there. So for children now at this point who are going into fourth grade and the public education system has an expectation because of the standards that that child has been given the foundation they need to be successful in classrooms. Now you have a fourth grader who can't read. And as you said, we see an increase in behavior. What does the future look like for that fourth grader going forward?
A struggle. Yeah, a lot of children will compensate too, especially what are called our twice exceptional children, children that have high intelligence and ability, but also have a disability such as dyslexia. And they will compensate for a very long time. But they're often your slowest readers.
So children who, such a big issue because children are all so different. And if you're a mom or a dad and you have kids, you know, right? Every child learns differently. And there's no doubt that in classrooms across America that, you know, teachers are tasked with a huge job of trying to meet the needs of every child in the classroom. We see an increase in schools doing other things for children, Deb. They say, you know, well, we have to meet all of these other needs for the child before we can actually get to the schoolwork. I have to imagine, as we've talked about though, that the lack of the confidence that comes from not being able to be successful in school and have mastery in these different areas really chips away at the child. So as you embark on this future of hopefully you being elected to the school board, what do you see as some of the challenges of the public education system? Because reading doesn't seem to be the priority anymore.
Yes, well, you know, the challenge is that they still continue. When you look at large school systems like Fairfax County Public Schools, they're very top-heavy with administrators, right? They have curriculum development offices. They have all of these people. And nothing is really getting, very little is getting down to the school base as far as teaching the teachers how to teach that structure, right? It's, there's a diversion for an agenda that is not focused, like you're saying, on the reading, on the basic skills that kids need. And they're working in silos. Meaning you have the Office of Curriculum and Instruction working at the central office that primarily is working with publishing companies instead of working with your teachers that are in the classrooms to develop lessons that are going to meet the needs of the children locally.
So we've been talking about, you know, in general, kids, 95% of children have the ability to learn to read. But as we've said, only about 1/3 of kids are actually reading at or above grade level in America currently, from what we see. Now you add in children, as you spoke about a little bit, with disabilities or with more challenges when they are coming to school, whether it be dyslexia, dysgraphia, children who are on the autism spectrum, children with different types of, my son suffered, one of my sons had a speech impediment that he worked through. And so parents would have something called an IEP. The child would have something called an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan, that the parent is meant to be a true partner in creating at the school. Can you talk a little bit about what that IEP, what the purpose of that is within the school environment?
The purpose of the IEP is to bring together a team. You're truly supposed to have a team of individuals, both at the school base and working collaboratively with the parents. It's not ownership of one side or another. It's supposed to be a document that is developed together. And unfortunately, the school systems have taken over that process from the parents. And in many cases, not all, but in many cases have obstructed the parents' rights to contribute their input, you know? Listen, the school systems deputized the parents as teachers during the shutdown. The least they could do is listen to what they implemented at home for their kids, what worked and what didn't work, right? And so that information is supposed to go into the IEP and considered by the team to develop goals that the child needs to learn. For example, going back to the basics of reading, the child will need to, you know, so-and-so will need to read, decode or segment, blend, CVC words with 100% accuracy by a certain date. And you're going to monitor that. And then at the table, the teacher is supposed to discuss with the parents and the entire team, which is a special education teacher. It could be, and it should be, a dyslexia specialist if that is the identifying disability of the child, a specific learning disability. It should include an administrator that should be sitting in the meeting to make sure that rights are happening, that both sides are getting to speak and collaborate. And any specialists that are needed, including speech and language pathologists, which by the way, has been grossly underfunded. We need speech and language pathologists because they have such an in-depth understanding of language. They are amazing in what their knowledge is and expertise. And at one point in my school system, we were co-teaching with the speech and language pathologists. Myself, as a special education teacher, had that opportunity. And we need to bring that back. Because it benefits not only just the child that is struggling, but it also allows the teacher to build their knowledge from that expertise. We all learn and grow from each other. So the IEP process is supposed to be collaborative. And it's supposed to build a plan, an individualized plan of where that child needs to go to both access the curriculum and to progress in the curriculum and a free and appropriate public education. It should not cost the parents a penny, because they've already paid their tax dollars, to have their child progress and access the curriculum.
You've got some big challenges ahead of you in Fairfax County on the school board when you get elected. And I'm going to say when, because the people of Fairfax County, if you're listening to this podcast, you need to vote for Deb Tisler. She'll be an amazing advocate for children and families. And we so desperately need advocates for parents and families and children sitting on school boards, making decisions that help school districts to reprioritize. I have said before, it's not a funding problem that we have in American public schools. It is a priorities problem that we have. And we do not prioritize the needs of children. We prioritize the wants of adults. I think that the education system has become a jobs program, to be honest with you. So what are you looking forward to once you arrive on the school board? And, you know, maybe just chat a little bit about what your experience has been running for office. I think that, I think Americans, I think moms would like to know what it's like to be an education advocate who is as involved as you are right now.
Well, I'll start off with it's, you know, you have to be able to be confident in what you believe in. Not everyone is going to be your friend. And the purpose, that's not the purpose. The purpose is to improve education, to ensure that every child has the right and access to be the best that they can be. Hands down, that's the priority. And if it means that I get criticized, which happens, and you know, everyone has free speech. And I just hope that, and I always say, let's do this in a civil way. We all have to come to the table. We all have to listen to each other's thoughts, ideas and experiences. But when we have a system like Fairfax County Public Schools that has excluded specific parents because certain people at the leadership level or on the school board do not agree with political or religious beliefs, which they should not do, they should never discriminate, they don't include all the voices. And we have to come together to solve these very serious problems. Like I said, 63% of children that do not achieve a high school diploma are going to interface with the justice system in a negative way. That's jail.
Wow.
Right?
It's horrible.
You're talking 85% of juveniles in the system have low literacy levels. This is a crisis. When you're looking at Fairfax County Public Schools with a $3.7 billion budget, Tiffany, billion dollar budget. And you have students in the English as a Second Language population that are at rates of 25% and above that are dropping out of school. And 63% of them will interface with the justice system in a negative way. You have a real crisis on your hand. It's time to look at what your budget is looking like. And it's time to look at how are you managing the training of the teachers? How are you best utilizing your staffing to get the direct services to each child? So Fairfax has a lot of training for the teachers. They are bombarded with training. But when you look at the training, very little is focused on the foundational needs or academic skills and functional of the child. It's focused on extraneous agenda items that the school board has enacted upon the teachers. And many of the teachers are sad. They're contacting me every day. I get an email or a phone call. The teachers are trying to handle this. You know, what do I do? Do you have a resource that I can use to help my students? Because I don't have it here. A school system with $3.7 billion, that's unacceptable. And they have, like I said, a very top-heavy administrative system, right? We have many administrators. But we're short-staffed on teachers, which just didn't happen overnight. This was a problem. Staffing has been a problem for a long time, right? But we can look at creating hybrid positions. We have to stop working in silos. If you're an administrator and you're, you have specific licensure and expertise, we need to start looking at staffing you at the school-based level to support children. It's pretty simple.
I think it's a great point. Yeah, when we, when I was on school board, we created a program called Rise Up. And it was in partnership with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. They helped us with the vetting portion of it. And we actually encouraged and supported administrative staff to go and to mentor children in schools, just to even get them back into the schools, talking to the kids so they could see for themselves how the kids were doing in school. And so it was a very interesting and eye-opening experience. And I think you're absolutely right. There are a lot of people that are involved in public education that are never coming into contacts, contact with children. And the money really isn't making it where it needs to go as far as education is concerned. And if we did nothing else in grades K through three, a focus on reading and basic math would be ideal for children to set that foundation for them. I can't believe that budget. I just, I can't even wrap my head around that amount of money and yet to have the outcomes that you have. Deb, I've said before, like in any other business that you have or in, to have the outcomes where you have a failure rate of two-thirds, 66% failure rate, wouldn't be acceptable. Why do you think it's become acceptable in public education?
Like I said earlier, children aren't put first. The system is put first. And it's a system that feeds off of failure. So we don't have mechanisms in there. You know, when you look at the regulations and the grant blocks, all that money that comes down, failure is rewarded over the success. So the more children that you have that are failing, the more money systems receive. And depending on demographics as well, filling those holes, they get more funding for that. If a child here in Fairfax County Public Schools, I believe, ends up incarcerated at the juvenile center, then Fairfax County will receive $45,000 per child in that center. We really need to look at the funding and see where it's going and how it's being best allocated. You know, when I talk about those grant blocks, one of them is under the ESEA, you know, ESEA Elementary. It's called the Elementary Secondary Education Act. And there is something in there called Title II. So money is funded to the school systems. And it's very, very flexible on what the professional learning is, right? But yet.
So that's teacher development. So that's teacher training, Title II, teacher development, teacher training.
And we have a lot of conflict in the verbiage of these grant blocks. So there's flexibility, but yet they're required to have evidence-based practices put into place, right? But there is no designation as to, well, how much of that needs to be reading? We really need to figure these things out at the congressional level, at the state level and at the local level, because clearly it's not happening.
No, and I think you getting involved as a parent and as an education professional is so incredibly important. And I do believe that when we're looking for people across the country to put children first, parents are ideal. And so what do you say to people when they say, well, you're a parent and you're running for school board? Not you, because I know you have a background in education, but there are parents who are running for school board and they don't have a background in education. But we do, you know, love is an expertise and we believe that parents have every ability to run for school board. So what do you say back to people when they say, oh, if you don't have an education background, you shouldn't serve on the school board?
Oh, absolutely not. Anyone can serve on the school board. You just need to, I believe, have that ability to put the children first and to be able to make your decisions soundly on what the children need. And that means not allowing yourself to get involved in some of these extraneous pieces that are going on. You need to really be thoughtful about what do the children need and do your research. Go before you start running for this office, for this seat. I advise that you attend the work sessions of your school board. Go online and see, when are they meeting during their work sessions? Those are the smaller meetings, usually working up to their large school board meeting. And that's where they talk a lot about the details of their decisions and what they're basing their decisions on. And I suggest that people go, exercise your rights and go and sit and listen and take notes. Send the emails to the school board members. During this work session, you said X, Y and Z. And if the work sessions are conflicting with your work schedule, certainly let them know that. The school, that needs to happen. These work sessions need to get recorded. And parents at any time should be able to access them so that they can understand the basis of the decision-making that the people they elected are doing. The other is asking for those documents and reading them over. I know a lot of us are so busy. We're just trying to survive and put food on the table and take care of our kids. But whatever it is, try in a lot, just a small amount of time each week, maybe 15 minutes if you can spare it, just to go on your school system's website to see what they're displaying, see what they are promoting, see what they are documenting there. And send one question a week to your school board member. I noticed that this decision was made and I would like to know why, because I'm a constituent and my child is attending the school. Or maybe you don't have a child in the school. Maybe you're a taxpayer and you just want to know what the return on investment in society is going to be. Are the children that are graduating going to be able to fulfill the employment spots that we need? Or are they going to interfacing with the justice system, as I was saying before, because they didn't, they were unable to acquire a high school diploma?
So many children not learning to read across America in our public schools. They deserve better and parents know it. And so parents getting involved, stepping up, running for school board, incredibly important. Some of the best advice I ever got when I was on school board came from the CFO at the time. And he said, you've got a lot of great ideas, but where are you going to cut? He said, you know, there's only so much money we get. Where are you going to cut? And so oftentimes, Deborah, we see that districts will cut art and music or make claims of needing to make cuts to security and other things. And what I have found is oftentimes that's not true. So what's your plan for going in with that red pen? How will you help the district to kind of refocus on children?
My plan is to request from the Human Resources Office. Basically, it's a staffing and accounting of the staffing. I want to look at, like I said before, what do we have as far as capacity and ability at our administrative level and what do we have at the base school level, right? Right now, we have such a shortage of advanced classes as well, excuse me, as remedial classes, meaning intervention classes, learning how to read at the high school and middle school level, because those children did not learn how to read, right, when they were younger? So looking at what our staffing capacity is and what abilities do we have before we make any further decisions to add more money and ask for more money. Fairfax County Public Schools, even though they have $3.7 billion, just ask our Board of Supervisors for more money, yet they're failing.
Lots of issues happening Fairfax. Politics are interesting. I've gotten a little glimpse into the world of politics. Who thought running for school board or serving on school board would become such a contentious issue sometimes? But I have to give you a lot of credit, Deborah, because I have seen nothing but positivity and a real joyful warrior spirit in you. And you spoke at our summit, our Joyful Warriors Summit that we had in Tampa last year with another woman, Marilyn Muller, a mom. Her daughter is dyslexic and she watched her daughter struggle early on in the public school system and has been such an amazing warrior for kids and parents and helped me at one point during COVID with my own son, who was having challenges with learning in the classroom. And so I want to thank you for coming and presenting at our summit. And I'm going to ask you, I hope that you'll continue to work with Moms for Liberty. I'd like to be able to put out some additional resources to parents who are listening to this podcast right now about how they can make sure that their children are really getting what they need from school. I think so many American parents are very worried now. You know, is my child really learning how to read? My, so many children don't want to go to school and is that normal and natural? But I think there's a certain amount of, as the kids get older, you know, they don't want to go to school, they don't feel like going. But certainly when kids are younger, I remember Marilyn telling me at one point, you know, kids should want to go to school in elementary school. And yet sometimes we're seeing that that's not the case. And so I hope you'll continue working with us. And I just want to thank you for joining us today and for being such an inspiration, honestly, to me and so many other moms. Any closing thoughts for parents as they, as the school year is winding down and they're wanting to have an understanding of where their kids are and then possibly how they can help to work with them over the summer to keep those literacy skills and learning skills up?
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you, Tiffany. I really appreciate everything that Moms for Liberty is doing to amplify this crisis that we're in and also bringing real solutions to the table. So absolutely, again, I will share resources that I have and I will continue to develop them and share them with Moms for Liberty. I would tell parents to, when you get that final report card, to send some of the clarifying questions that you need. You know, can my child read at a rate where they can keep up with the curriculum? Or what is my child's reading rate? Meaning, how many words per minute can my child read at grade level? Can they answer comprehension questions? That's what's their understanding when they're reading at grade level. And I would ask for, do you have any work samples? Could I see how my child is writing in class? Can my child write a complete sentence? Can my child write a paragraph? Can my child write an essay as they get older? Ask for those samples and then engage in that conversation with the teacher. Ask them, what can I do to support my child during the summer? And one of the things that I suggest is having your child read out loud for you, if possible. And time them, see, you know, how they're taking with their reading, how long they're reading. Ask them questions after you've read something together, whether it's the sports page or even some of the comics. You can just engage in some conversations about literacy. And certainly engage in a lot of that background knowledge information, content information, exploring museums, if you have the time, whatever you can do, just a few minutes each week. And at least having the child reading 15 minutes a week with you or out loud or engaging in that literacy would be a huge help.
All right, so we're going to make that commitment. We're going to put out some helpful hints and tips for moms this summer to be able to continue, moms and dads, sorry dads, I know there are some dads who listen too, for you to be able to help to support your child's learning at home. If they're in public school, I know a lot of you are homeschooling now. We, you know, hats off to you, or you've chosen a different method of learning. All parents want their children to be successful in life. And I don't think that the expectations of parents across America of public education have really changed that much. I think most parents want their children to learn to read, to be able to write, to be able to do math. And the fact that's not happening is of real, real concern. Why is it not happening? We talk about this a lot at Moms for Liberty. I don't know that the goal of the public education system right now is to have functionally literate children. I think that the goal has become for children to be, to be social justice warriors, to be politically literate. And parents, the way we turn that around is by getting more involved. A lot of the nonsense and the toxic ideology that we're seeing in the classrooms wouldn't be happening if more parents were involved in the classrooms. And you can run for school board, as Deborah has said. She's running, she's a mom of four and has been under intense scrutiny in a very hot political climate and yet keeps her focus on the kids and children and education. So Deb, again, I'm just so incredibly proud of you and everything you're doing and thankful that you've become a resource for so many parents in Fairfax, but across the country. So thank you again for joining us and keep up the good fight. We've got your back.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Tiffany.